Go ahead and call our first meeting of the evening to order. This is a special meeting of the Barstown City Council, September 26, 6:00 PM. Call the meeting to order. The purpose of this meeting is for hearing on the appeal of HRB COA 17-68, 17-69, 17-75 for Ms. Philiatru who lives at 215 South Fifth Street. And I'll let Secretary Tim Bubner take over as the hearing officer at this point.
Thank you, Mayor. As Mayor said, this is an appeals hearing that's appealing the decision in the COAs mentioned. And the way we proceed in these matters for all those present is the presentations are made first by the applicant and then by staff of the Historic Review Board. Each party has 20 minutes to make their positions and provide evidence that they want the council to consider. You can reserve time for rebuttal at the end of your presentation, or, you know, so in other words, you can split your 20 minutes up into 15 and five minutes if you'd like. You're to present evidence. It's not a time to question the council. The council is a deliberative body in this case and is to consider information that you all provide. The evidence presented in the cases to be considered here are limited to those certificates of appropriateness that has appealed. And specifically, they are COA 17-68, which the application was to replace siding with hardy plank at 215 South Fifth Street, COA 17-69, which was to replace shutters with board battened shutters, and COA 17-75, which was window replacement at the same location, 215 South Fifth Street. Before we start, there's been some question, and I'd like to provide the information that will satisfy the question. The question has been asked about under what kind of authority do we regulate historic structures in the city of Barstown? And the, under KRS 100.203, the Cities and Counties May Act zoning regulations, which shall contain an E under Section 1, is districts of special interest to the proper development of the community, including but not limited to exclusive use districts, historic districts, historical districts, which is the authority that the city has to then adopt regulations that would cover historic structures in the community. In Article 15 of the zoning regulations for the entire community, there is a section, a historic preservation section, which is Article 15 Historic Districts. And under that, in Section 15.31, it says that there's an architectural style, general composition, and general arrangement of the exterior of a building or structure, including the location of windows, doors, light fixtures, and signs. Items of concern shall mean kind, size, style, color, and texture of building materials, windows, doors, light fixtures, signs, and appurtenance elements. Under Section 15.42, it empowers the Historic Review Board. It says the Historic Review Board shall adopt and make public written guidelines for use in making, recommendations on request to alter, demolish, relocate, or add to a designated property or build a new structure in the historic district. And the Historic Review Board has adopted those guidelines, which are referenced in the appeals materials that you all have. With that, I will turn it over to the applicant, appellate, and that is Ms. Philiatru. And again, you have 20 minutes. You can split that up if you want.
Basically, at this point, I'm asking just to be removed from the historic district, to take my name off the registry. I had requested that to be talked about as well.
Well, that can be accomplished. And your grounds for doing that would be?
Because I can't work with an organization who waivers their rules and regulations. They bend them for one person and not another. With the material that I'm asking for is clearly on other homes, so I don't want to be a part of that system or organization. I'm not questioning the system. I'm questioning the integrity of the people on this board.
Just for the council's information, and I've been in the community since 1989, and I know that we've expanded the historic district. We've never contracted the historic district, as far as I'm aware. And in order for you all to do that, you would have to have a hearing. Well, actually, the hearing would have to be before, first before the Historic Review Board. Then, I believe, it would go to the Planning Commission. And then, the Planning Commission would make their recommendation to you all as a body to then take action to remove a property from the historic district. That's, so it would be a multi-step process.
So you could change the zoning regulation, in other words?
Basically, yeah. It would be an amendment to an overlay district, you know, as zoning classification. So if that is something at the end of your all's deliberations tonight, if that's something that you all would want to pursue, there is a process to do that. I think that what you'd have to do is request that the Historic Review Board have a hearing, request then that the Planning Commission take up the recommendation from the Historic Review Board and send on their recommendation to you all. It's not something that the council can take up tonight, you know, later without following that procedure.
Now, we can do that on a special meeting for the appeal, if you want to do the appeal. We can do it on new business under our general meeting at 7:00 PM.
Yeah, and that's true. And I'm talking about disposing of this and at the appropriate time. But you're right, it would need to be taken up on our other agenda.
Well, we can discuss that now, I don't think.
My long-winded way of saying, yeah, you can't, it's not something the board, you don't have the authority to do that right now. Even if you wanted to, you would be out of order in terms of the agenda for this meeting. And even if you wanted to, any regular meeting, say, yep, we hope that it's out, there's steps to be taken before you do that.
Well, shut me down if I can't ask this question. Should her request preclude any kind of hearing we have tonight?
I would say no, because her opportunity, Ms. Philiatru, your opportunity to appeal this is tonight. And so if you don't want to present any evidence concerning your appeal, that's fine, but I know the opinion that you would then forego your right to appeal these. Because you've appealed them, this is your opportunity to provide your information concerning the siding, the shutters, and the window replacement.
I can proceed forward with that. However, if we can't come to an agreement, that's my ultimate, I don't want to be a part of it. I don't understand why I'm being refused to put the same material on my home to improve a home that was going to ruin. It had holes, and it still has holes in it. It's not safe for my son and I to really reside there for much longer. I don't understand why I'm being denied when others have it on their homes. That is visible front of the road, not just the backyard or whatever.
Can you present your presentation?
How do you want me to present it? I mean, I'm sorry, I don't understand.
Do you have examples that you can refer?
I do, may I?
Yes.
Over here.
Yes. And you should, anything you need to present, I mean, anything you want to document and hand over, which would be part of the record, please.
The home right over here on Flagee, if I'm not mistaken, it's Conway's home, they have hardy board. You can see it from the road. I talked to the contractor. It is definitely hardy board, not just on the new construction, but on existing on a side.
And do you know the date of that house, Ms. Philiatru?
Me? No, sir. But I know it's not been very long ago that that was done. And I think it looks great. I just don't understand why some people can have mix-match materials, but I'm being held at the standards of a full-on historic. And I'm okay with full-on historic or aesthetically historic. But it's going to be fair for everyone. If I'm going to be held at those standards of full-on historic, then everyone else needs to pull their stuff off and do the same, or allow me to do what has been allowed already.
And when you ask this question of the Historic Review Board, the response was?
No.
In terms of, like, the same material?
Yes.
Okay. So they didn't say, here's the difference between the circumstances, or?
They said that if it can be seen from the road, then it's not allowed. However, again, other homes have it that you can see from the road. And it's not just hardy board. There's vinyl siding, there's aluminum siding, there's lots of other siding. It would be insane for me to put wood siding back on my home when hardy board, concrete board, looks exactly like wood that I don't ever have to replace again. It doesn't make sense on a resale investment side for me to do that, first off. And why would I choose to do it if the option of better material is there? I want to get along with everybody, but I'm not going to back down from being treated fair.
I think the regulations call for it to be replaced with like-kind materials that the home was built with.
I understand that, but like-kind concrete board wasn't around?
That's why they want it replaced with the same materials that the home currently has on it.
Okay, I understand.
Many of those properties that I'm aware of that have it are new construction, new additions to those homes, which does prevent, since it's a new addition, it wasn't originally built with wood, therefore, they allow hardy board to be used.
I understand. And I understand you told me to stop nitpicking other people's homes to find out what everybody else is doing, however, that's important for me to know.
I just gave you the answer that I know why they permitted that and why they did not.
No, you told me that at our meeting, before you told me to stop nitpicking. But again, it's not nitpicking. It's building a case just to say that I don't understand the organization. I don't understand. And it's not just on a new addition. It's not just on a new addition. We've discussed this prior to this meeting, that it's on this home right up here.
There's a lot of new addition to that house.
I'm saying it's on the existing addition.
We're here to talk about your case tonight.
But this goes along with it.
Okay, go ahead, proceed.
So can I please understand why I'm being denied?
Right, you'll let the Ancient Board?
Yeah, well, that'll be the Historic Review Board. Again, the council's not here to answer questions. It's here to hear your evidence and to then decide. And don't forget that you have three matters here. You have the shutters, the siding, and the window replacement.
Siding is the most important, so I want to try to really make that clear. Shutters, I will give on the shutters, but when it comes to the hardy board, I'm not backing down.
And what do you see, what's the issue in terms of the shutters?
It was just, I was asking.
For the boards?
I was only asking for the board battened shutters, just because I like the style of it. They said that I can't. I have to do wood board on the main floor, but the basement and the upstairs can be board battened. I don't understand that, but again, I'm okay. I can, I will get past that point.
Okay, if I ask a question?
Yes, sir.
Because I've read all of the stuff. Are there certain windows on the shutters, if we're talking about that now, that you were looking at?
Certain windows?
Yeah.
Yes, sir. I really, I want new windows. They're not efficient.
No, no, no. I'm talking, we're talking about the shutters. I was asking about the shutters.
I'm sorry, I thought you said windows.
Are there certain windows you want the shutters on?
I would like to have...
Which windows?
All over the house, except the front window.
Okay. Well, there's part of the regulations of the shutters really don't fit the windows. I know you had one very big window in the front.
There's no shutters on there right now at all. I would have them, I was wanting to have them made where they were actually usable with the real hardware on it.
And another question come up is about whether it was evidence that there were shutters there before or not. And you, there was something in the record saying you said there were, and I don't know what evidence was.
There is, like, some little prongs where the shutter sat down on it and held in.
Is that really old architectural shutter brackets or something?
It appears to be. They're like, they've been painted over, I couldn't tell you how many times, but they appear to be like the old-time original. If not original, very old.
And just so we don't forget about the windows, you were starting on the windows and...
The windows, I just feel that they need to be replaced. Frank Welch came over, he told me that, yes, they can be repaired, but they're not going to be efficient. They're, it's still going to let the heat, the cold, and, you know. I love the historic district. I love everything about it, but I'm going to do what makes sense for me financially, for me all across the board. I mean, it just makes no sense to try to repair an old window when there is one that is like-kind out there.
And was there, I know often when they talk about replacing or repairing the windows, they allow for some sort of exterior treatment like storm window or some sort of barrier? Was that discussed?
Frank said if he repaired, he would suggest a storm window to at least block the air from coming in and going out, to make it a little more tight, even though it may not look as nice.
And was that addressed by the Historic Review Board, as far as you know?
No, that report came in after their meeting, that they, I think, the report said that they were going to have Frank Welch look at it, and that he would have to do a report back to the board, and then it would be kind of a staff decision, I think, at that point in time. And as I recall from Frank's statement, he said, you know, there's a way to do it, to repair it, and then, I couldn't read all his handwriting, then there was a second alternative he had that would avoid storm windows.
Sash packs or something?
Yeah, something like, and maybe somebody can explain to me what that is. I don't know if Ms. Philiatru can, or the Historic Preservation Board can, or what.
What's the approximate age of the windows that are in there now?
I have no idea, honestly.
Maybe we can get that from Rashad's report that she presents. I think that's important, we know that.
Frank, from what I remember, he acted as though those were the original ones.
They're not all good.
Yeah. But he said they're like, they're kind of like, you know, they're in there sideways a little bit. They're not, there's maybe two that's usable. And for what he said that he would do to be able to repair and restore them is going to cost up there as much as a brand-new one.
And just to go back and to talk about the siding, which I believe you said was the most important thing to you, my understanding from reviewing the materials is that you removed the old siding prior to even applying. Is that correct?
I did. I first came for colors to be approved, and they were. However, after I had another couple contractors come and take a look, because we were starting to find a lot more rotten wood than what it visibly appeared, they said there were, the wood, you know, it wasn't showing rotten spots, but they would take a sharp object and they would press into it, and it's soft. So that will start rotting in here really soon, and it makes no sense to keep that on there, and I'm paying for a paint job that's going to be like, it was up there as much as it would have cost me to put the hardy board on.
Was this a painting contractor?
Excuse me?
Was this a painting contractor?
Just a paint, yeah, just a paint. No, I had an actual contractor come. The painting contractor did find soft spots. Then I had a couple more contractors come, and it was just, there was too much replacement to leave, to leave that wood siding on there.
So where are the siding? Well, I saw a picture with it on there and a picture with it there gone.
I have a tabex on there right now.
Right. Where are the boards removed?
Oh, they're gone.
They're gone? I'm going to have a problem accepting your testimony that on Angeles, you were given a stop work order before they were removed, is my understanding. Then you removed them and disposed of them. You want us to believe that they were rotted?
We were asked to leave those.
You were, well, you were ordered not to remove them.
We were told by Logan Spalding that we could go ahead and finish, make sure we secure the home, because that's the most important thing to him.
Logan Spalding is a building inspector, not a soul.
You know, I get confused with as many people as you got in contact to fix the home up. I apologize for that, and that's not being disrespectful, but there's too many little places you got to stop and get permission from to fix up your own home that I am paying for, that I'm not asking money from you all. I want my home fixed. That's all.
And Ms. Philiatru, did you want to leave some, you're at, not 13, you're about 13 and 14 minutes in. Do you want to leave some time for rebuttal?
Yes, please.
Okay. Well, you got another minute if you want to sum up what you're asking for.
Basically, I'll want, if others in the district, and I know that this is the case, have a mix-match material on their home, including hardy board, including board battened shutters, including replacement windows, I want the same fairness. That's all I'm asking for. If everyone goes to full-on historic preservation, I'm okay with that, too. I don't mind going by rules. I don't mind regulations, but they will be fair, or I won't go down.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Jennings, you're up.
Hi, Council. How are you doing tonight? Okay, so basically, I'm here tonight to talk to you about Ms. Philiatru's appeal with three COA applications. I think we all know that living in a historic district is a special privilege. It comes with being a part of this amazing community. Comes with some advantages, higher property values, maintaining those property values. However, it also means you have to follow the regulations, both federal and state, which we have adopted. Those regulations are put in place so that we maintain our historic appearance and our integrity as historic community. And there's something also I would like to point out, too. Whenever the HRB Board makes a decision, we are not allowed to take costs into consideration. That's down from the state and federal level. What we have to do is we have to make a decision based on the home. And based on that home, what is most appropriate for that home, not what that costs. So when we look at a series of basic proposals for, say, anything for a home, we can't pick out, well, you know what, let's go to the middle one, because this is more appropriate, this is more affordable. We have to pick the one that is most appropriate. So we have to make that decision without taking any costing consideration, and that's what we have been tasked to do. So I'm going to start out with Exhibit A, essentially. Ms. Philiatru, there's a COA there which shows that she has applied previously. She clearly knows the application process and how that works for the HRB Review Board. Exhibit B is the Historic Review Board minutes. It's pretty detailed. My minutes are almost verbatim, so explaining within each application why that was denied and why the board made that decision. We're going to start out with the windows evidence. The actual COA regarding this, of course, Frank was to evaluate that, and you have his letter in response to that. Frank came to me and said the windows can be repaired, they're over 100 years old. They're significant, and they're extremely important to the aesthetic and historic value of that property. So my recommendation, of course, is that they not be replaced, because they can be repaired, and because they are such a significant portion to this building. And if you can see that in Exhibit F, which is Frank's letter that he stated. Now, you were talking about the sash packs. That is essentially replacing part of the window sash and allowing for that to have a better seal on it. And that's been done in the historic district before. The state likes to preserve the sashes if possible. That's where the storm windows come in, depending on the tightening up and making sure that it's re-glazed and the windows are properly maintained. It can be a pretty tight seal, and it can almost be as efficient as new windows. Frank informed me that there are repairs to the windows were affordable. He gave me a price on that. We couldn't consider the price, but the price was significantly less than a new window.
Rashad, can I interrupt for just a second and ask you, I know with him having those two options there and it going on to you, would you have approved either of those options, the sash pack or the storm window?
I would prefer the windows to be repaired to the storm windows, because the state would want the sashes preserved, and Frank says that he can preserve those.
Goodness, Philiatru, choosing an option come to you and getting staff approval on the windows, did that ever occur, where you can make a decision on, based on Frank Welch's report?
Essentially, how the events transpired is that Ms. Philiatru appealed the windows and had not come to me for an approval. So I contacted Frank, and he did go take a look. And whenever Frank gave me back his report, he stated that they can be repaired, that they are very historic and a significant portion of the home. And therefore, that, then I made my recommendation that they should be maintained and saved. You can see in Exhibit E, that's our guidelines regarding windows. These are the federal and state guidelines we have to maintain. W1, retain historic windows. W2, repair historic windows using materials that match the original. This is especially true if they're historic windows, which Ms. Philiatru's is. Exhibit C, you're going to see an email from Mike Riddick regarding what he believes moving to the Heritage Council, talking about how it's usually not feasible to replace windows. And in Exhibit D, you're going to see the math replacement chart, which he so kindly sent to me. And of course, again, the guideline states to retain historic windows. So I'm going to jump now to siding. If there's not any further questions on that, does anyone have anything? So Exhibit A, I'm going to go back to that, which occurred in April of 2017, shows that Ms. Philiatru is very much aware of the application process and how that works. She did not ask for approval to remove the siding. She did it without consultation, without approval from the board. Exhibit G is the first stop work order issued to stop removing the historic siding that was deliberately ignored. Exhibit H is the second stop work order that was also ignored. And if you look at Exhibit J, you're going to see the pictures of the siding being removed despite those work orders being issued.
So was most of the siding up before those stops?
A good portion of it, yes.
Already stopped, yeah?
No.
No, the old siding was still there. She's tore it down a moment away now, she says, so violating the stop work orders prevents us from examining siding, if we're trying to rather than that, and maybe putting it back. I don't know what the penalties may be for violating the stop work order, but that's not our decision tonight.
Exhibit I, you have Mike's response about removal of the siding. Please note, this email was sent after the siding was removed, so there's no confusion about that before that time period. So she contacted Mike after the siding was removed on that, right? It states that keeping the historic siding is extremely important to the nature of the home, and it should not be removed. If it's rotted to the point it could not be repaired, they want it to consolidate all of the historic wood siding to the sides that are most visible. of the historic wood siding to the sides that are most visible. Ms. Gilatru's property is on a corner property, meaning that it's immensely visible from almost every angle. So that would have been something, that would have been immensely difficult to do and we would have not ruled for that. If you look at Exhibit K, you're gonna see our siding guidelines. Again, these are the federal and state guidelines which we have to follow. S1, states to retain historic siding. So a lot of the confusion is, and a lot of people don't understand this, but truthfully, what we do is we take every house, the time period in which it was built and the style in which it was built, and it becomes its own case study. And I'm so sorry if I've said that a million times, but it's so important to understand that because each house has its own set of rules, depending on when it was built, what characteristics it's had, what's the most historic importance, does those characteristics define, you know, the structure itself? So we have to take all that into consideration of what we're allowing to do. The Conway House in question, the hardy plank siding that is visible from the street is a new addition. There is no historic siding to be replaced there because it didn't exist. So when we have historic siding, we have to retain that historic siding and repair that at all costs.
Rashay, let me go back to the point here. You said that, and this is a verbal letter from the gentleman, Michael, that if there's historic siding but there's rot, what they like to do is to consolidate and basically take off the historic siding, consolidate it on the most visible facade, and then, I guess, then you have to apply to whatever's gonna be the replacement. And you said, I thought I heard you say, "We're not for that."
I apologize.
Clarify that for me. Did I mishear that?
Maybe, I apologize if that's how it came out because it's not accurate. Essentially, what it is is that her house is visible from all three angles, so we state that hardy plank siding can be, but we would actually have her go back and repair that wood siding. We wouldn't allow hardy plank to go back with that. Does that make sense?
Okay, so if there's, if there's rotted, I'm just gonna, let's say that half of the siding is rotted on the most, the shortest street side, you all would require then to replace that?
With wood.
In place, leave the rest of it and so you have some old growth, some new growth?
Yep.
Okay. Keep going.
But you won't integrate like concrete siding within with old wood?
No.
Never do that?
No, no. We would require it be wood to even do the repair and rot. We would require that. Now, the Kentucky Heritage Council's stating that if it's so rotted, sometimes they allow hardy plank, but if you also look at that, there's three stipulations with that. And so going into that material, and basically it states you have to save the wood siding at all costs. And that's essentially the point that Mike's trying to make with that.
But one on the siding, this is corny, so let's take, I know there was a question whether two or three sides visible, but you said come out the back. But if you had, one side was not visible, could they remove the boards off that, put on the three sides, and then go with hardy board on the fourth side?
We, because it's historic wood siding and not like new construction or something like that, we would ask that it would be wood even on that floor. We wouldn't match with the old wood with the hardy plank. We would require that it go back with wood. Consideration tonight too, last element would be the shutters. L is our shutter guidelines. S H1, retain historic shutters and hardware. And S H2, repair the historic shutters with in-kind materials. Part of the problem with this application is, as Ms. Gilatru stated, there was evidence that there was shutters on the structure at one time. However, we can't conjecture what that would have been. So we know that there's historic shutters, so what we have to do is we have to determine what would be most feasible for that property, again, not what is, not what is most aesthetically pleasing, but what is most practical and feasible and historic and accurate for that property. So board and batt and shutters are kind of a special case in which those elements would have to be proven. What was much more common in this community and especially on the first floor that would allow for airflow would have been louvered shutters to allow the circulation of air. So we approved for her to have wooden louvered shutters fully operable to do on the first floor, board and batt in for the basement, because that would have been potentially considered, and board and batt in for the very top, which it also would have been considerable. So what we, the Board, we all agreed on historically, the first floor, which is, if you will look throughout the district, you will see that in many other areas, is louvered because it historically would have been used for airflow.
Now, the regulation, under S H4 says solid shutters are appropriate for the ground floor and solid or louvered shutters are appropriate for the upper floor.
Yes, and upper floors meaning upper stories too, but we could have one floor, you would have those louvered on that first floor.
Okay. I know the thing you submitted as part of the regulation shows solid shutter.
Yes, and part of the issue with the board and batt and shutter too is the zigzag would not have been accurate and I provided a more accurate picture of what a board and batt and shutter would have looked like from the Kentucky Heritage Council.
That's your board's line.
Any questions?
Yeah. So she can still complete this, I know it's gone further than it should have already, but if she's willing to do the wood siding, do the shutters, that sound more appropriate and that kind of thing, this is fine. We're gonna let this go on, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Yes. My recommendation, we of course, at all costs, we wanna retain those original historic windows. That's part of our requirements, that's part of what we're tasked to do. Second, if it was, you know, historic wood siding, wood siding has to go back and the shutters, the louvered type for that particular floor, to allow for airflow on the structure.
So once all these windows are probably, the sashes are, if they're completely rotted, which maybe they're not, but we have allowed those to be remade?
Absolutely. And that's what I'm, repaired and repaired with the, basically the storm windows added. That's exactly what I'm talking about. Frank would go in and he would repair what needs to be repaired to make the windows operable and functional and to be weathered. And we allow that.
And there are materials there that are, if you can still fix those sashes, that is very durable.
Absolutely. Very much so.
Shut off.
Yeah, it is. It's very common. That's actually what we prefer, of course, to replace mine. That's what we want.
Let's get you up to your fifteen minutes you wanna reserve.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Gilatru, you got five minutes?
With her presenting her case studies and all these things of each home being different in nature for the area that they were built in, then why isn't each homeowner, why don't they possess a copy of a specific guideline, regulation, rules for their home to eliminate a lot of payoff? I had no idea that this mess that would be just trying to repair a home. Had no idea when I purchased the home, there was nothing attached to my deed, there was nothing at all saying that I would have to go through what I've gone through to deal with this. And the only reason I went on ahead and proceeded to take the hardy or the wood down is because there's already been hardy board approved. It wasn't to be malicious, it wasn't to be hateful to anyone or disrespectful, but it's to respect myself to be able to go and fix my home up within the guidelines of what's already been approved. So my suggestion is if they want people to go by their rules and regulations specifically, they can't say that they have rules and boundaries that you can go by if each home is specific in nature. They need to do their homework on each home, present it to the homeowner, so before this home is ever sold, the new buyer can say they want in or out, because I wouldn't have done it.
And I've asked you this question before and for the councils, that your realtor did not, of course, there was not a realtor involved?
Yes, sir.
And the prior owner did not inform you that you were in the historic district? Did you suspect you were in the historic district?
Yes, I did suspect I was in the historic district. However, what I'm saying, even with knowing I'm in the historic district, the boundaries that they say they have, the regulations that they say they have are not enforced consistently. It depends on the mood or the person that is in front of them. Ms. Butler, the last time I was here, I had a COA to get a piece of copper approved. It was passed on, it didn't get talked about, and she brought that up, "Well, you need to make a COA on that." Yes, ma'am, I did. I have a, she said, "Well, I need a sample of that." And I said, "Well, I have a piece out in my car, may I please go get it?" "No, I'm just tired, it's late, I'm tired." So it's like, your time's more valuable than mine. You know, if your home was sitting way and beaver-hered, I believe you could probably pull a few more minutes out to stick it out for some more...
Well, that's not an issue that's before us tonight, but...
It's been an issue.
You've got a minute to sum up.
I believe I've stated everything that I need to say. I would like consistency or to be totally removed from the registry, please.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Rashay, you got your five minutes?
So...
Is there anything you need to address?
I don't believe so. I wanted to ask if there was any further questions as many regarding any of the three applications that would be appealed tonight? Any decisions there are by the HRV Board?
One thing I'd wanna clarify, and I've had this discussion with Ms. Gilatru and didn't wanna take up her time to repeat it since you're opening it up, but the suggestion that I make and the suggestion I think the City Hall staff makes is to come and talk to you, understanding the intricacies of this, is to consult with you. You're a consultant as well as, and you're a resource. So you can't expect everybody to know everything about this. What you want to do is you want them to come in and ask the appropriate questions and get the appropriate information. Correct?
Absolutely. And essentially too, to that regard, there's four hundred, you know, and eighty properties in our historic district. We have, we're so blessed and we have a beautiful community here. There is no way within my time limit or my job that I would be able to write a specific report or guideline for each structure out there. It takes the applicant coming to me to talk about that and to request certain things before they do things in order for this process to work, and that's what did not happen tonight.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you all.
And with that, what I will do is I will close the hearing portion of this, at least in terms of taking testimony, and refer to the council as I do in all these, we did this once in a general way so that you all have it, but you all have the options, you see the options, one, two, and three. I'm gonna start with three. You could send it back to the Historic Review Board for reconsideration, but you know, that would cause delay and I'm not sure you'd get a different response. You could vote to overturn the action of the Historic Review Board, approve the request of the applicant. In this case, you would want to, if you wanted to approve one, overturn one, you would need to do them separately, or you could take them all together in a blanket action. But I would ask that if you do that, you get reasons based on the record to approve the applications over the objections and recommendations of the Historic Review Board. And last but not least, you could vote to uphold the action of the Historic Review Board for the reasons that they have given. And I'll turn it over to you all to discuss.
If I may, I'd like to address the consistency thing. I think maybe twenty, twenty-five years ago, that might have kind of been an issue. But my experience is, that is not an issue at all. And I think this Board and the Board before this Board and the one before them have always been consistent in their decisions. And there's different projects here that fall through the cracks. And some of these projects, you know, not everybody is gonna come, get the Board's approval, a little bit of things get done all the time. I see them, I think the Board sees them, everybody sees this stuff. But you can't police that one hundred percent of the time. But on these major projects, there, there's a lot of products there that can be used. If you work through the channels, you can use products in your house that are very worthy and very good products anymore to use. Not necessarily these concrete board right products, but you know, wood, there's lots of wood product that could be used in this project. I've seen a real good valid argument here that I don't think that she's explored or even looked at the other possibilities, that maybe she just had this stuff in her mind. "I want the concrete board, that's it. I want new windows, that's it." But you know, in the historic district, that's our HOA for people that live in it. To me, it's as good a homeowners association as you can have. And they protect our properties and you know, it's part of, one of the real cultural elements of Barksdale is this really nice historic districts. And it's very important that we protect that. And this Preservation Board is deciding to do that and I think that they've done a good job here on this project. And we should uphold what they've done.
Anyone else?
I'll agree with Joe in the sentiments. And if Ms. Gilatru was misled in any way or wasn't given information by her realtor on this property that it wasn't a historic district and that these rules definitely apply, then that's unfortunate. We actually looked at the property, you know, my wife and I did. And we know going, we knew going in, you know, by talking with the realtor that that was in historic district and it would take a considerable amount of funds to bring that property up to where it needed to be and keep it within the HRV guidelines. So we knew that going in and it was unattractive for us because it was going to be a considerable amount of money. So if that was the case, that is unfortunate, but as Joe stated, we need to protect the integrity of our historic district and the rules that the HRV puts forth are designed to do that. So I would side with Joe in recommendation of upholding the recommendation for denial of the HRV.
I'll go next then, I guess. Going to each of these, the party board versus the appeal there, on that, it's disturbing that there was a stop work order done and we had the historic siding and older board on it and the orders were just ignored and the boards were disposed of. And looking at some of the material, it probably was a mistake to dispose of the boards to the extent there were some good ones. Now, she claims that they were rotted, but she's gotten rid of all the evidence, nobody can go out and look at it, say it's rotted. And she saved the boards where somebody had examined it. Maybe, maybe she could have carried her burden, but since she's destroyed evidence, basically in law, when you destroy evidence, you're, you take whatever presumptions that evidence could have proved and you lose that. So I would probably uphold the denial of the hardy board on that. The shutters, you know, you did, she was, could do either louvered shutters and then you had a solid one. Let me see exactly what the board did on that, because I would, because the regulations allow it, I probably would have gone along with probably, or probably would go along with the solid shutters, maybe not the ones you proposed, but something that would be solid because the regulations allow it. It says you'll, you know, they talked about that this house may not have been appropriate for a solid shutter, but the guidelines don't say that you can make that distinction. It just says you can put solid shutters on a ground floor. And so I'd be okay with that, not maybe the front big window, although that's not a shuttered window. So I might reverse on that, but reverse on that. The windows, all she said, she wanted energy efficiency, the regulations required it to be repaired. She was given opportunity to meet with the staff about doing, how they would be repaired based on Frank Welch's report. I think she still has the right to do that if we uphold the appeal because that stays in effect. That part stays in effect. So I would probably vote to uphold the bill on the windows. Or not uphold the appeal, that's the wrong segment. Uphold the decision of the Historic Review Board. Uphold the decision of the Historic Review Board. And I'll wait for the discussion, may make a motion on it, time appropriate. I'd go ahead, somebody made, and I don't, Tim, I guess it probably would be best to make a motion separately on each of these appeals, each of the three. Well, there might be a disagreement on-
Yeah, there's disagreement on any one element, you know, you might want to take them separate.
We're discussing shutter. Correct me if I'm wrong, but I think board and batten would kind of be considered a solid, but that's not really considered a solid shutter.
Well, you'll-
In my opinion.
What is, tell me what board and batten is.
Board and batten would be like two or three foot bats with a board across them to hold it together. It's style, John, more than anything.
Well, I mean, this is what she said would be okay.
That's board and batten.
But she said this would be okay. This is something Rochelle said would be okay.
On the foundation, on the foundation, not on the main windows. On the foundation windows.
Yeah, but the regulations, I'm just pointing out, I think, you know, you got the, we're enforcing, we're seeing whether she's meeting the regulations or not, and you know, it says that replacement, let's see, replacement shutters should be or appear to be operable, measured to full height and width of the windows and be constructed with historically appropriate material. Solid shutters are appropriate for the ground floor. And I don't, and that's, of course, they did it for the foundation.
That's really not a definition of that shutter. That's a board and batten shutter. That's not a solid shutter. I think it's just an architectural feature we're talking about as much as anything. And, you know, I think-
And then, well, S H3 says, and I don't want to interrupt you, but I just want, S H3, if replacement is required, a replacement should be wooden, louvered, or of another style with historic precedent and should cover the opening if closed.
And I think that that's the key is that what Rochelle was saying is that the, at least the testimony was, is that that, the board and batten was not architecturally appropriate. There's no proof that that was a type of shutter used in this type of application.
Okay.
It's what I, I mean-
Well, that then proves that you might have changed the line.
But we've got about eight minutes till we got another meeting, so keep that in mind as you all continue deliberations, or if someone makes, wants to make a motion, we can have further discussion after the motion is made. And you can take them individually or as one group and see how that goes.
If I'm in order, then I'd like to make a motion to uphold the Historic Review Board's recommendation for denial of COA 17-68, COA 17-69, and COA 17-75.
And uphold their recommendations including denial, because I think some of them were approved with conditions.
And conditions therein.
Okay, thank you.
I'll second. Okay. Motion and second during the discussion?
Well, yeah, when we do it with the conditions, so she has the right to go back, you know, with Frank Welch's report and talk to Rochelle. And, you know, I know this isn't part of the field of discussion, but I can tell that, you know, anyone listening, if you've got a house in a historic structure and a historic district, your best resource is Rochelle. If you go to talk to her first, it'd make life a whole lot easier going through the Historical Review Board process. And she can tell you all about it, she can give you recommendations of what's been approved, and it can be a great asset, so.
You have a motion and a second?
Motion and second during the discussion. Hearing done. All in favor, same time saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion is carried. Okay. Completes this hearing, asks for motion for adjournment. Someone for motion and a second. Second, the Council of Buckland. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Adjournment, we start our next meeting at 7:00.
Guess six minutes.